Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us for another Monday night breathwork session. And for those of you who were joining us in the recorded session, thank you for checking it out and participating. Can you find a comfortable position to sit or lie down where your back is straight? You may want to have some water nearby, and perhaps some Kleenex. Sometimes when we breathe through the nose, you may feel like you need to clear out some congestion. I'm going to pick a card from Eckhart Tolle's deck, from The Power of Now. Give your mind a little something to contemplate as we move into session. Okay. So just allow these words to enter your consciousness in a relaxed and easy way. We don't have to overthink it. It's almost like you're listening to poetry. And trust that your subconscious mind will process it in a way that's for your highest good. Observe the many ways in which unease, discontent, and tension arise within you through unnecessary judgment, resistance to what is, and denial of the now. So again, just observe, and you can do this now. Observe the many ways in which unease, discontent, and tension arise within you through unnecessary judgment, resistance to what is, and denial of the now. So just see how that sits with you. And invite you in tonight's session to see how it feels to be completely in a place of acceptance of what is. This is a big ask if you're feeling some discomfort or tension, because it's inviting you to also bring acceptance to even that. But it's only for a few minutes. And it's like an experiment. Practice what it feels like to have no preference of this or that. And just see how that feels. You don't have to carry that into your life, but it's an excellent practice if you're willing to play along. Notice what arises, completely allow whatever's there, and breathe through it. So find your position, sitting or lying down, back straight but not tense. And then allow your eyes to gently close if you haven't already. And when you close your eyes, allow this to be an opportunity to just slow down. Start to become aware of your inner experience. Body sensations, breathing, any emotions that are there in the background. Just start to notice that inner landscape. And as you become more aware of what's happening inwardly inside, you may find that the busyness in your mind sort of moves into the background. It becomes a little quieter. And as such, we don't need to fight our thoughts or push them away. We just allow them to be there, but we withdraw our attention from them and bring it back into the body. Now let's begin to notice the sensations of your breath without altering anything. Notice how your breathing feels. Let your belly become relaxed. And notice the sensation of the breath entering the body, rising, cresting and falling out of the body naturally. And you may find that just by paying attention to the breath, that there's a tendency to alter it or to try to control the breathing. And as you notice that, see what happens if you just become curious as to when the next breath will happen. Notice the tendency to control or alter the breath and just wait. And the breath will happen. And you just wait to see when the next breath happens. It's like curiously waiting and watching, like a cat might watch a mouse hole. Waiting for that mouse to come out. You're just waiting for that next breath to happen. Now I'd like you to begin to intentionally deepen the breath into the belly and allowing it to fill up until the ribs start to expand. On the exhale, just let go. Mouth or nose, doesn't matter. When you breathe in, see if you can allow your stomach to become so relaxed that it expands and creates a little bit of a vacuum. Like it pulls there in, makes some space for that air to just be naturally drawn into the bottom of your lungs. And fill your body up from the bottom up. As if your body was an empty cup, a vessel that is being filled from the bottom up. Belly, rib cage, chest, and then it falls out, overflows, and comes back to being filled up from the bottom up. Fill the cup bottom up, overflows, falls out, top down. Now if your nose is clear and not congested and you can breathe in through the nostrils, try to take the inhale through the nose. Belly, chest, up, relax, from the mouth or nose, doesn't matter. Effort on every inhale. Use your intention to pull the breath into the belly and up. On the exhale, just let it go. Let it happen. Nothing to do on the exhale. Nothing to do to let the breath out. It will fall out. Continue to breathe in deeply into the abdomen. Let the breath fill the body naturally from the bottom up. You don't have to do this fast. You don't have to force it. Just let the body fill up with oxygen and let it fall out. And if you notice that there are some releases that want to happen, such as a yawn or eyes watering or a little shiver in the body, allow that to happen. This is a very normal, healthy way for the body to discharge tension. And by breathing down into the abdomen and involving the diaphragm, it stimulates the nervous system to rest and relax. It's an excellent opportunity to just release and let go of any tension. Once you begin to feel this rising, naturally filling up in the body and falling out, settling on the exhale. Intentionally notice any pause or gap at the top or the bottom. After you breathe in, are you holding? Is there a little pause or hold at the top? And after you release, is there a gap? Is there a little weight at the bottom? And once you become aware of that, see if you can shorten that gap. See if you can remove that hold at the top. Make it connected and continuous. Breathing in and as deep and as strong as you can without tensing up. You're breathing in fully, but you're not shrugging it in or tensing the shoulders to pull it in. Deep as you can while remaining somewhat relaxed. And then letting it go, falling out. So the inspiration will rise but release without a hold, fall out naturally, rolling in to the next inhale, which falls out naturally, rolling up and falling out again. It will almost feel circular. The inhale rises up, rolling over the top, falling out, but always rolling back into the next inspiration. Feel it connected. As deep as you can without tensing up. You'll find that sweet spot. You'll know when you get it, where you feel like you're really breathing deep, but you're not creating any stress in your neck or upper back or shoulders. Work in that sweet spot. Work in that comfort range. Where there's definitely an intention to breathe deeply, but you're not creating excessive physical stress in your body. And then find that wave. Find that groove where the wave rises, crests, falls and rolls into the next wave up. Cresting, falling. Now as I'm speaking, continue to breathe. And this is your opportunity to find out what feels good for you while continuing to be conscious of the abdomen being relaxed and soft and full on the inhale. And consciously removing the pause or gap between the breaths. That's really all you have to think about. And you don't even have to think about it now, because it's becoming automatic, effortless effort. The breath rises, full lungs and falls out, naturally pulling into the next breath. Rising up with no hold, falling out. Now I'm going to introduce a drum as a metronome. And I'm inviting you to match the tempo of your breathing to the beat of the drum. This will be a little bit deeper and stronger and faster than what you're doing now. But it's only for a short time. So I'd really like you to just commit to a few of these deeper, stronger breaths and just see where that takes you. See what that opens up for you. Notice, even now, maybe you're feeling a little hesitation, or I don't know, I'm already pretty swimmie, I'm already pretty open, I don't know if I'm ready for this. And just let those thoughts come. You don't have to attach to them. Let them go. Realize the resistance will come up and we can breathe through it. Breathing in and out and in and out and... Keep breathing. As I'm speaking, you're just following the beat of the drum. Nothing to it but to do it. Just breathing in and out. Letting the breath wave follow the beat of the drum. Matching the tempo of your breath to the drum beat. Notice how the beat almost pulls your breath into the tempo. If you just get out of your own way, it'll just naturally follow this rhythm. You don't have to force it. Just pull that breath in on every beat. Every second beat is a big in-breath. The exhale will happen. In just a few breaths, I'm going to invite you to take a big, deep, slow, full breath and hold it in. Okay, you know that's coming. So when I cue you, you're going to get ready to take a nice, slow, big breath in and hold it. Now get ready. Let's take a couple of biggies. Let it go. Ready for it? And when you feel ready, breathe it in big and full and hold it in. Hold the breath in. Keep that breath in. Everyone should have a nice, full lung of air. And if you find that you're not holding it at a comfortable space, you need to release before I give you a cue, you can reset by releasing, but pulling it back in and holding it again. And now that you know that's available to you, you don't have to think about it. Just relax and allow yourself to surrender into the stillness. Notice how it feels to have so much oxygen circulating through your body. You may even feel waves of that oxygen and energy circulating, pulsing, tingling. Feel the body. Feel your arms and your legs, your fingertips and toes. See if you can drop your shoulders and let your jaw unhinge, but still hold. Relax your body, but keep the oxygen and energy in for just a few more seconds. Now we're here to live. We're here to raise our vibration, increase our energy, and release what no longer serves us. So I'm going to invite you to make a big, loud sigh on your exhale. Forget about being self-conscious. Don't worry about who hears it. This is for your good. Let's hear your vibration on the exhale now. If you feel like you're holding back a little bit, let's take one more big breath in and really make some sound on the exhale. And just breathe naturally. Bring some awareness to listening. Notice the sound of the music. The sound of my voice. Any sounds in the space around you. All sounds are welcome. So there are no interruptions. Because whatever vibration or sound that you hear is invited as part of the experience. And as we move into this next cycle of connected breath, create an intention to breathe in and out of your nostrils. And if you find that difficult, use your mouth as well. That's totally fine. But just see how it feels to breathe into the belly, breathe up into the chest through the nose, and gently release through the nostrils. Good, and fall back into that natural rhythm. Allowing your body to guide the breath into the abdomen, up into the rib cage and chest, and then fall out of the nostrils naturally. Effort and intention on the inhale. Pull it in. Make it strong, as deep as you can without tensing up. Let the exhale just happen. Completely let go. The air will fall out. Pull it in the nose if you can. Let it fall out of the nose with no hold. No pause at the bottom. Pull it back in. Release, relax. Keep going. I'm going to allow you to just find your rhythm. Really use some effort to pull that breath in. It'll fall out on its own, but you pull it back in every time. Start to become aware of any drifting away or any tendency to become so relaxed that you're not pulling that breath in, or the breathing is becoming softer. And let this be a little reminder to breathe in a little deeper again before letting go. Pull it in the nose before you just drop it. Find your rhythm. Find a pace that lets you just fall into a natural groove of effortless effort. So that breath just becomes automatic. It really is like riding a wave, rising up, cresting, falling, rolling down, and pulling back up into the next wave. Wave after wave, breath after breath. And you may find that you're becoming a little lighter. There's a sense of opening or dissolving. Maybe a little dizziness or swimminess. And perhaps that causes you to hold back a little bit. Just notice if there's some resistance or hesitation. And now that you've brought your awareness to that, you can release it and breathe through it, pulling it in strong through the nose, letting it go. Coming back to effort on the inhales. Releasing with no hold. Letting your belly fill up. These are deep breaths, but they're not tense. Remember, we can fill up the belly, fill up the chest without straining. Find that sweet spot. Find your groove. But keep coming back to that deep inspiration. Some thoughts may be in there, some, "How long is this going to be?" Or, "It's not working for me today," or, "Oh my God, I'm really going deep." Let them come and go. Those are totally natural thoughts. The brain will think. The heart will beat. The lungs will breathe. We just keep going. It's a no matter what. Breathing it in, letting it fall out. The more we can just become the breath and let the breath breathe us, ride that wave of breath, the deeper our surrender. The deeper your healing. Come back to breathing wave after wave, breath after breath. Completely surrendering, trusting that your body will only breathe and release in a way that is for your higher good. And whatever you're feeling is totally okay. As I introduce the drum as a metronome, we're going to breathe in and out of the nostrils a little bit more deeply and strongly and faster. And we've done this already. We know it's okay. On the other side, you're totally fine. In fact, you may be more relaxed afterwards. And so whatever you feel, just allow yourself to feel it. Let those emotions come up. And if there's some movement that wants to happen, let it happen. If there's some sounds that want to come out, please let them go. If you notice there's tears that want to come for no reason, just let that come. Whatever is coming up within you to be experienced is coming up because it's on its way out. We don't hold it in. We let it go as we breathe in the nose, out the nose. Now you really may feel some intensity building. That's okay. And this isn't forever. It's just a few more breaths like this. And when we're done, we're going to take a few nice, deep breaths before we exhale and hold the exhale this time. Get ready. Let's take a couple of big, deep ones before release and hold. Now breathe it in big and deep. Let go. Full breath. Last one, now big and deep. Mouth or nose, doesn't matter. When you exhale, just let it out to where it feels comfortable to hold. See how it feels to just let the breath fall out. Holding it out at that perfect spot. And if you're feeling a little strained or resistant, it's not the right spot, or you need to breathe before I give the cue, you can reset by breathing in big. And then just trusting your body to find the spot as you let it go, slow. Maybe right here, you stop exhaling. And then just relax. Surrender into the emptiness. Those thoughts will come and go. That's okay. You're just in the body and you're feeling those waves of sensation and vibration wash over you now. You're allowing those vibrations to just move any tension out of the body. You're allowing the thoughts to arise and then fall away. Notice what's coming up for you, perhaps a deep sense of peace and opening and relaxation, stillness. Maybe somewhere in there, there's a little bit of a whirlwind, some tension, some holding on, some emotion. Allow your awareness to gently fall into that space where there is a little bit of holding back, a little bit of resistance. Maybe some charged emotions somewhere in the body, and it really stands out now in stillness. That vibration becomes noticeable. All around you is healing energy. And in this group, we are building that healing energy. We're contributing to this positive vibration around all of us. Energy knows no distance. And when you breathe in, I want you to invite that good vibration, that healing energy, to pull into that spot in the body where you're holding onto some charge, where you're holding onto some resistance and pain, whatever it might be. Breathe in that good vibration now. Hold it in. And just let your shoulders drop, let your jaw relax. See if your body can become soft while you're holding it in for just a few seconds. Now, without putting a lot of pressure, I want you to just exert a little bit of bearing down to push that energy into that spot of the body that really needs to be opened up. A little bit of push, push that energy through. Let it circulate into that area. Feel it opening things up. Feel it vibrating. Create a passage for this energy to move. And again, when you exhale, let out a big vibration and just feel all of that tension release now. If your body wants to move or shake, let it go. Perhaps you just feel yourself falling into stillness. And that's okay too. And whatever you're feeling, just soak it in for a little bit. Breathe naturally and just feel what's happening in the body. You want to take another big breath? Great. You may feel some waves moving through, some sensations washing over you. That's good. Soak it in. Now you may want to take a sip of water for this next cycle of connected breath. I'm going to invite you to breathe in and out of your mouth. If you have some lip balm, lip moisturizer nearby, you can use it. I recommend you breathe through pursed lips so that your throat doesn't become too dry. Breathing in and out of your mouth may evoke some strong emotions to come to the surface. Mouth breathing is usually implemented when we're in fight or flight or a state of excitement. So this may bring some charged emotions up to be felt and released. And that's okay. If they're on their way up, they're on their way out. Let's begin really slow and easy and just see how it feels to breathe into the belly through the lips. Let your rib cage fill up next. As deep as it can again without tensing up, and it'll just fall out. Back up again. All the way in. Relax it out. No hold at the top or bottom. No pauses, no breaks. Connect the breathing. And you may find your lips become a little more dry, your throat feels a little scratchy from this. It's not forever. Okay, take a sip of water again if you need to. And then let's just do it. Let yourself feel a little bit different or uncomfortable for just a few breaths. Remember, this cycle of breathing will conclude. And you can just let yourself feel whatever you feel. Just for now. As an experiment, let's see what happens if we just do it anyway. Notice if you're shrugging the breath in. And see if you can let the shoulders drop and come from the belly. Let your body pull it in from the gut and up from there, as opposed from the neck and shoulders and yanking it in. We're letting it fill up naturally. Breathing it up, bottom up, fill the cup, let it overflow and fall out. Fill it up, bottom up, rising up and then falling out naturally. Effort on your inhale. Falling out. In and out of the mouth if you can, using your nose if you need to. Just a few more breaths like this. Get into a groove. Good. Don't overcomplicate it. Don't try to get it right. Just letting the breath fill you up and let it fall out again. The next breath will come in. The next breath will come in. You're doing it perfect. Just go like that. However you're doing it, the air is coming in big and falling out naturally, that's it. Out of the head, into the body. Feel the breath. Feel the expansion on the inspiration, the relaxing, releasing, settling on the exhale, pulling back into the next wave rising. That energy is constantly flexing into contraction and expansion. Just allow yourself to be pulsed. Allow this breath to breathe you. Allow yourself to be breathed. Trust yourself, connect with this breath of life and let it carry you. This is a huge opportunity to get out of your head if you let yourself, trust your body. Trust the process. Trust the universe and you can come back to thinking about it later. For now, just trust that this is your breathing. This is just air and oxygen, respiration, lung activity, and whatever you're feeling is perfect. Moving that oxygen, literally moving energy and vibration and sensation through your body. Huge opportunity to liberate stuck energies. Tremendous positive chance to get those emotions that are stuck to start to move and flow. Where are you holding on to something in one area and where does it want to move to? How can you start to open, allow that energy to be utilized? Allow it to flow. That's your energy. Let's bring it out. We don't need to suppress or hold back anymore. Hold it in. Let go. Keep going. Let go. We're going to finish strong with the beat of the drum, but it's going to be short and brief. And then we're going to hold on the exhale again. Here we go, breathing in and out and in and out. Yeah, it's a little intense, it's a little quick, but it's not forever, it's short, let's go for it. If you're on the edge of something, this is a great opportunity to blast through it, to go through that gateless gate. And allow yourself to just dissolve into the breath. Trust yourself. We're going to slow it down for a couple of big, deep ones before we let it out. Here we go. Inhale big. Let it go. Pull it in strong. Release, relax. Last one, everyone. And then just exhale, find that perfect space to relax and release and hold. Soften your body. Imagine you're just falling outside of yourself, observing your sensations with no attachment. Just be present to this sense of stillness and emptiness. Listening and feeling the vibration of the music in your body. Now you're settling even more deeply, you can feel the shoulders drop and that last little bit of tension just softening. And you know that you can hold longer than you think, so we don't need to think. We just trust that the body will guide us. Better than the brain at this point. How do your arms and your legs feel right now? As the heart rate slows down and your body settles even more deeply. Now whenever your body gives you the cue, knowing that it's coming from your physical self, not your, it's been a long time, I think I should now, brain. When your body tells you, you'll take a big breath in and hold it. At the top. Whenever that happens for you. And if you're still holding. Invite you to take a big breath in now and hold it in just briefly. And again, big sigh on the exhale. Just give yourself a little shake, just if you're really relaxed, just gentle. If you feel like you need a big one, shake it out vigorously, whatever feels right for you. On this last cycle of breathing. I'd like you to decide, trust your own intuition, listen to your body. And decide whether you're comfortable breathing in and out of your nose. Or in and out of the mouth. Or in the nose and out the mouth. Or change it up if you feel like it, but don't overthink it, just find out what feels natural to you, find out what feels like you can sustain or maintain that in and out, that connected breathing. Feel it out, let your body tell you. Listen to your gut, your intuition. As long as your belly is getting soft and full, beginning of the breath from the bottom up, filling it up. Letting it fall out without effort. Now play along, play around with the depth and the tempo of the breath. Perhaps a little quicker, feels more natural to you. Or maybe really slow and deep and full, feels like you could just go forever. As long as there's no pauses or holds between the breaths, they're connected, it's circular. As long as it's relaxed and full belly breaths in and up. Falling out effortlessly. There you go, you're finding your groove. You're guiding yourself, you're trusting your own inner intelligence. You can feel now that your body knows. And you're trusting that inner guidance. Just deciding that you're going to come back to those deep breaths no matter what, through the mouth or nose. No pause, let it flow. Let that circle roll. Let the waves rise and fall. Allow one breath to pull into the next. And as you drift into deep relaxation, perhaps you're falling away from the intention of deep breathing. Now this is a reminder to come back to breathing in deeper and full or on the in breath. If you're on the edge of something that feels a little intense. Let this be a reminder that it's safe to feel, you can feel it to heal it. Bring some acceptance. To whatever's coming up. You can really let your body move, release and integrate. That charge, that emotion, that strong sensation. How would it feel to let yourself breathe through it this time? What would it be like to not numb or escape or try to fix something, but allow it? Accept it so deeply and feel it so fully. That it can be metabolized and integrated and released and transmuted. And this doesn't come from trying and overthinking, it comes from just allowing and breathing. Keep going, in and out, mouth or nose, big pulls in, belly up. Find your groove. Really becoming curious about how your body feels. Breathing. Really noticing if temperature is changing in the body. Alternating from hot to cold and vice versa. Nice big breaths. Becoming aware of any tingling sensations, vibrations in the limbs. Any emotions or memories or images arising. Breathing deep. Noticing how the vibration of music resonates in the body. Such that you can almost feel the music and the sound of my voice in your physical self. Breathing. Breathing deep. Coming back to the breath, always coming back to the breath. Becoming more curious about. These unique sensations in your body. And with that curiosity is a sense of allowing and exploring. As you give yourself permission now. To breathe through whatever remaining layers of holding back might be there, even that one. Even that one reason that seems so valid to just pause or hold back. What if you let that go and just breathe deeply? Through that psychological barrier, let it go, puncture through with the strength of this breath of life. Now's a chance to even let that go. And see what's on the other side. Is there a space of openness? Is there a clear space? Where the thoughts can have peace? Where we may initially have resisted, but as we allow it, it's actually the most freedom that we've ever tasted. And as the old, small sense of self dissolves into this vibration and breathing. We can connect with a stronger, deeper, truer sense of self or higher self. That expansion. Breathing, coming back to deep, full breaths, your body will breathe you the way it needs to breathe, we let it happen. And on these last few breaths, I invite you to allow a strong vibration, a sigh, a moan, a sound on every exhale. As we move through. Integrating and releasing that last charge in the body. Whatever wants to come out. Every exhale's a sound. Just let it happen, however it wants to happen. Let it be weird, it's okay. There's nothing to be self-conscious about as we move beyond that small sense of self anyway. We're just here to heal, expand and become free. We're here to evolve. We can feel that vibration elevating. Keep going, make some sound. See if you can embarrass yourself, you can't. There's nothing to be shy or embarrassed about because we are simply energy and vibration. And just allow those last few breaths to really vibrate out. And when you feel ready. You can soften the breath. Allow it to just naturally fall back. Into a gentle rhythm. Of natural breath. And just see what happens as the breath falls into a natural rhythm. Does some movement want to happen in the body? Great, let it happen. Some sounds still want to come out? Allow them. Feel your body and the surface that you're sitting or lying on, feel the points of contact with whatever surface supports your body now. And remember, as we move out of practice. We don't have to move back into our usual state of consciousness, we can remain fully connected with our body and sensation. You can remain aware of your breathing. You can carry this expanded sense of self with you. You're totally allowed to enter into your regular state of living from this higher state. And allow other people to feel that vibration, let them, you know, take it how they will. If it feels good. Remain in that space. I want to honor the time for those of you who are joining live. We're coming up on seven o'clock. Take your time, though, please. Breathe slowly. Take your time to let your eyes blink open. Look around you and just appreciate your surroundings as if you're seeing it for the first time. Really remain aware of sensations and vibrations in your physical self. And for those of you who need to go, I just want to honor you for your showing up, for yourself and for others, and for those of you who are watching virtually. Thank you for joining. I really do feel that no matter where you are or when you're watching or joining this, there is no boundary or distance to energy. And you are sharing your energy with all of us and we are raising the energy of the collective, so thank you all. I'll end the recording here. If you want any more information, if you have any questions, if you're watching the recording, I'll put a link down below, feel free to reach out and connect. Love you.